Mrs. Galante, would you call the roll?
Mr. Crowner?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mrs. Milfil?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
We'll be late.
Mrs. Weber?
Here.
Mrs. Feet?
Here.
We'll begin with an opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not at the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. If anyone has a comment they'd like to make on an item not on tonight's agenda, please approach the microphone and state your name and address prior to making your comment. Seeing none, we will move to approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for separate discussion or action? Mrs. Weber?
Yes, I would. It's the item with respect to the, under Business Services, bullet point, the second bullet point, please.
All right, we will remove the second bullet point under Business Services from the consent agenda. Are there any other items Board members would like to be removed for separate discussion May I have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda other than the second bullet point item?
So?
Thank you. Mrs. Randall, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any Board discussion?
I have an additional recognition I'd like to comment on.
Please do so.
Okay?
Under recognitions or under the consent agenda?
Um, under recognitions.
All right, then we'll deal with that under recognitions.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there any further Board discussion of the consent agenda other than the iPad item? Is there any community comment? Mrs. Galante, would you call the roll?
Mr. Crowner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfil?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mrs. Feet?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber, would you like to speak to the iPad item?
I'd like to recognize the several members, not several, a good number of members from our music faculty that presented Simply Music yesterday.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Weber. We're discussing the iPad item now.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. I'd like to know a little bit more about this, why we're moving this to this point, and how they are going to be used, and where they're going to be used.
Mr. Price?
Well, in early January, I brought a presentation to the Board about mobility in the district and the intent to purchase some mobile devices, just as sort of like a forewarning of where we were intending to go. Some of the reasons that we felt and feel that mobile devices are integral, are important to bring into the environment are because they map directly to at least two of the three strategies from the district's long-range plan, specifically Strategy Number Two, transforming the learning environment in order to ensure access to curriculum and personalized learning for all students, and Strategy Three, using data-driven decision-making to clear, to create, sorry, clear performance expectations for students, staff, and key stakeholders. Mobile devices in the hands of students better equip us to reach those goals, and in fact, without them, it would be somewhat of a greater challenge to do so. Now, originally, I wasn't going to bring this to the Board for purchase approval probably until around the April or May timeframe with a view to purchase in July. However, as mentioned in the presentation that I made in January, we've begun the process, we've got a committee together, we've selected the target classrooms and teachers where these devices should go. So we've begun that process, and the committee selected the Apple iPad as the device of In the last couple of weeks, actually, it was three days ago, the Apple iPad Generation Two was released, which in and of itself has some features and enhancements, but they do not really bring anything to the table when it comes to the district being able to achieve its goals and its desires. However, one of the side effects of that is the first-generation iPad has been reduced in price. And as a result, for the same amount of funds that we had budgeted to make the purchase in July, we can actually get another 200 devices at no additional cost, or at least no additional cost over what we initially intended to spend on this initiative, or this first phase of the initiative. Subsequently, the challenge is, is that the first-generation iPad is limited in stock. Apple is not making it anymore. The stocks that exist are the only stocks that exist in the world, and once they're gone, they're gone, and that opportunity for a discount, that opportunity to obtain an additional 200 devices at that price will be gone forever. Apple rarely, if ever, discounts their goods and services, so it really is quite a good opportunity for us. I've been in close discussions with Apple. They do have stock, and I actually talked to them today, and there is existing stock for a purchase if we were to make a purchase tomorrow. However, like I said before, the stocks are very limited. They are not producing anymore, and once they're gone, they're gone. They have projected, based on their current sales, that it shouldn't be too much longer until we get below the mark where there's enough left for us to take advantage of the opportunity in a profitable manner. Subsequently, I've come to the Board today, and I know it's a break from protocol, but there's sufficient benefit if we were to discuss this today and approve the purchase today so that I can make it tomorrow and get those additional devices for the students. As to how they're broken out, as I mentioned a little while ago, we have a committee in place now. Ms. Zerrinberger, myself, and the secondary school principals sat down and discussed where the devices would best be placed. We identified some classes, including teachers that were more likely to adopt such an initiative with a passion, because it's important we have buying at the teacher level as well. And one of those teachers is here with me tonight, Mr. Price, so if you have any questions for him, no relation. If you have any questions for him, then he has volunteered to offer up his opinion. Well, I will add, though, when we initially identified the classes and calculated what we had available in funding, et cetera, it turned out that we, the estimation was that we would have about 800 devices to purchase. However, that was an estimation, and next year's registration has occurred, so the enrollment for those classes is actually above and beyond what was initially estimated, specifically with the AP courses that have been selected to receive these devices. So we're now in a position, and this isn't to put any pressure on the Board, but we're now in a position where we actually need 991 of these devices to meet that demand. Now, if we don't do that, that's fine. As we started this initiative and we spoke to the teachers, I did advise them that, you know what, it depends on how much money we have, it depends on the enrollment. We're working off estimations now, but we may get to a point where we can't meet each of these classes, and we may even need to cut a class or two out of the initiative. So there's full disclosure there, and they're aware of that. However, suffice it to say that if we can take advantage of this opportunity, we can meet that increased enrollment demand without having to cut any of those classes out of the initiative. So I have here just a quick breakdown that I'll pass out to you, and it shows basically the classes in each of the secondary schools, the amount of students or the enrollments for each of those classes that would be involved in this, and also we've included a mobile lab at each of the secondary schools, so like a batch of, and this was always the intent, but sort of like a batch of iPads for each of the secondaries, that we can't give one of these devices to every secondary student out of the gate. We have to start somewhere. So there are close to 1,000 students that will be receiving them, but then there's also another 3,000 secondary students that won't have them. So we have a mobile lab of iPads allocated to each of the secondary schools so that the teachers and the classes there can use them and take advantage of them as well. They just wouldn't be on such a permanent basis as the other 950 that we're doing. So I'll pass this down.
Mrs. Weber?
Mr. Price, for the viewing public, could you summarize what you are handing out to us, please?
Absolutely. So in summary, these are the figures we put together today, based on the classes that we initially included in this initiative for each of the four secondary schools. As I mentioned, the enrollment in particular for some of the AP classes is far above what we initially estimated based on previous years. For East High School, the classes that were selected for this initiative were AP Psych, AP Stats, AP Calc AB, AP Calc BC, and the total number of iPads to meet the enrollment demands in that school, if I include a mobile lab of 30 to 32 devices, is 286. At West, the classes are AP Psych, Algebra II, Geometry, and of course, again, the mobile lab. Total number of devices there at West High School are 265. Longfellow Middle School, in the middle schools, we are doing it a little bit differently. We're not specifically selecting classes per se, but we're selecting houses. In middle school, House 7A, there's 106 students, and also the accelerated geometry class of 90, and a mobile lab of 32, for a grand total of 228. And at Whitman, we're using the, oh, we've incorporated the sixth and seventh grade houses, plus the mobile lab, for a total of 212 devices at Whitman. All up, it makes a total of 991 iPad devices to meet that enrollment demand, plus the mobile labs at the four secondary schools.
What is, please help me again, the mobile lab?
Mobile lab is, an iPad, the iPad is what we're giving to the student. The mobile lab is really just a 30 of these, so that, for example, at East, because we have these dedicated to specific classes, the students in those classes will receive those devices and have them all day, every day of the year. In addition to that, we will also be providing a block of 30, so that teachers in other areas, when they want to incorporate those devices into their lesson plans or curriculum, they'll be able to do so, and they'll be able to sign that, like a laptop cart, or like signing out the computer lab, or a stack of books from the library, any other resource that's in the district, they'll be able to sign out a block of 30 iPads, or 32 iPads, actually, for use in their classroom.
Do these iPads, are they used outside of the building, or do they remain within the building?
For the students, they'll be given them, they'll have 24/7 access to them. They'll be checked out at the start of the year and then checked back in at the end of the year, except for, excuse me, except for the block of 30 that would be a mobile unit. But as for the others, yes, the intent will be that the students will have them at all times, because one of the primary drivers behind this is to give them access to the curriculum on a 24-hour basis, and this will help them achieve that.
Why are they going into a new manufacturing item, not, why are these no longer being produced?
There are just, there are some hardware features. For example, there's a camera on the new iPad, that was a high-demand feature, because the iPad is also a consumer item, and people like to have their cameras, they like the video conference. From our perspective, putting cameras into the hands of students and internet access is probably not the best thing, so we're not really worried about that in the updated model. There are a couple, there is a faster processor, a bit of a slimmer case. Would it be nice to have the faster processor? Yeah, sure, but what, the first generation meet our needs. There are really no issues with speed there from the work that we've done. There are a couple of application features that would be nice, but when compared to being able to get an additional 200 devices, there really is no comparison. The features aren't shocking enough for us to overlook the opportunity that has been presented to us.
What is the lifespan of these?
Estimated lifespan is four, well, our intended lifespan is four years. The iPad's only been on the market for about 18 months, but if you compare it to any other Apple product, in particular iPods, et cetera, they last a long time. And the battery life on these is quite extensive as well.
I just am not sold on the fact, just becomes, they become available, that we need to take advantage of this, and it's because of what I, don't know what we're going to be facing, and I need to, I truly believe we need to be conservative where we are spending the dollars. But the 1,000 that we are getting, is it true to believe that instead of 800, we are able, with the same dollar, purchase 1,000? We're staying within the same dollar factor?
Absolutely, absolutely. It actually works out that there's a $100 reduction on each of the devices. We initially intended to buy 800, with the $100 deduction, and their price dropped down to $400. The $100 deduction for 800 devices has given us an extra $80,000, which, when you multiply it out, works out to be an additional 200 devices for the same bulk amount of funds.
You know I'm not a technology person, so I need to ask questions. At the middle school level, if the students are allowed to take these out of the building, what type of protection is there? Is there some instruction given to the use of it, or do I not need to be concerned? Because I know our young people are advanced in the technology.
There will be. Yeah, there will most definitely be instruction. We're still at very early stages yet. We've only just formed the committee, we've only just decided on a device, and as I mentioned before, we probably wouldn't be coming to the Board until April/May timeframe with this proposal, had this opportunity not arisen. So, you know, do I have those answers for you now? No, they are intended. The committee will be planning those. You know, there are a lot of things to address, there's not just the instruction, but how best to approach, approach things like, do we cover them with insurance, or do we just run a repair fee? Do we require the parents to sign a accountability document or not? There are a lot of those things that definitely, absolutely will be addressed before these are deployed. It's just that this price reduction and opportunity caught us off guard, so we're not, we're not at that point at the moment.
Would this be for the next school year, 12?
Yes.
And who is on the committee? I think you did mention.
There's myself, Mr. Price, Mr. Anderson from Student Learning, Mr. Price, the teacher, Mr. Price, no relation. And there's, I believe, total, including Mr. Price, I think we have about 17 teachers that, I could run off a few names for you now if you want, but I actually don't have the full list.
And both, all, excuse me, all four schools have representatives on the committee?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. In the two middle schools, it's all the house teachers. So at Longfellow, it's House 7A, and at Whitman, they don't so much run names, they just have houses, and it's one of the sixth and seventh grade houses. And in the high schools, it's more at the departmental level. So like I said before, AP Psych, the teachers that are involved with AP Psych, AP Stats, AP Calc. They're actually, as mentioned before, they are the trailblazers in the district. They're the ones that really want to do this, and have, they're volunteering their time. You know, when we get together as committees, after hours, and they're integrating them into their curriculum, they're planning and writing their curriculum to accommodate these devices. So yes, there is very heavy educator involvement. My involvement really is just to facilitate the technology, but as far as integration goes, absolutely, that's completely educator-driven.
Thank you.
Sure.
Board members, any other questions or comments? Mr. Crowner?
I have a few. I'm concerned about what they're going to be used for, and you made the comment that you found classes with teachers more likely to use them. That doesn't sound like a very ringing endorsement.
Not so much more likely, but more driven, more driven to use them.
So currently, there is not an educational plan for them as to what they're actually going to use them for?
It's in development. It is in development. The educational plan is the long-range plan and the three strategies that we have there. As I mentioned before, Strategy Number Two.
I understand those strategies, but we don't have a specific educational plan yet as to what they're going to be used for in the classroom.
No, but I have 18 teachers that are volunteering and dedicating their time to write that plan.
I just want to add a comment to that, that we, those teachers that we're talking about are teachers that have iPads presently in their hands now, so that they're able to look at what the options and possibilities are. With the AP Stats and the AP Psychology, when we looked at the textbook adoptions, we looked at all the features that would work with a mobile electronic device and what could be loaded on there. So I, the math teacher, there's a lot of software, calculators, some benefits to being able to download some of those things that can be expensive for students, possibly at even some, having more flexibility with those devices. So the math teachers have looked a lot into this because of some of that kind of flexibility. I also just want to add to that, that we have presently two teachers that are taking a class through Wisconsin Lutheran on their own, they're paying for this at their own expense, on how to use iPads in the classroom. And for the second session, we currently have 12 teachers paying $1,500 to take the same class through Wisconsin Lutheran to learn how to use, to enhance instructional, and they're paying for that themselves. So, you know, they're, they've been working with the iPads hands-on, and having them to experiment and see what they can download and put on there, things like periodic tables, calculators, inspirational software for math and geometry, so that they are, they know a lot more about what those possibilities are because it has been different from content areas. But they've been exploring that, they've had them for several months now.
It's never really been a question of whether they wanted to use mobile devices or not. The big question was which mobile device would be selected, and as mentioned, that decision was made about a month ago, so their entire focus over the last month has been selecting applications for use, how to best utilize that specific device. I think, Mr. Price, if, did you want to pass any words on some things you're doing? You'll be able to get, get some examples straight from the office.
I feel you've asked what we're going to use them for. It's kind of like if you went back 15, 20 years and said, why do you need a computer in the classroom? No one would say you don't need a computer in the classroom anymore, it's the link to the outside world. Reading, and if you go online, just read, Google one-to-one education and mobile devices. It's incredible what we can use them for. Textbooks, the paper textbook is expensive, and that's something that can go away after a while. We, the companies that are producing textbooks can update those, update those files, correct things that are right, the wrong in them, send out the file update, goes. I mean, it's just, it's loaded. So software can change for textbooks from year to year, from month to month.
We won't have electronic textbooks for all these devices next year, will we?
I don't.
For some of them, we will. Some of the courses?
The only courses that may be available for our AP Psych and AP Statistics, that, the only reason is that those were courses that were new, so, or getting a review and update, so we are going backwards to make it happen, but moving forward. And we haven't placed those orders yet because we're waiting to see what we do with this device, but we could make those purchases for an online access, and the cost to us is about anywhere from half of what it would cost for a hard copy text to about, maybe we save a third, so somewhere between a half and a third, depending on what the text is for which of those subjects.
And that's just looking at one possibility. The endless applications that are able to use Dropbox. I can assign every student a Dropbox. If a student's gone, we can, whatever sheet that we hand out, doesn't, we're, we would, there's a lot of teachers that out there would like to go to paperless. Being able to just distribute a sheet to a student, and they have it on their iPad, they can work right off that. A lot of the programs, you can just record right on that, and the student can put it back in the Dropbox. Gone is the, I lost my assignment. What do you mean, you've lost your assignment? It's been electronically given to you.
But that's also accessible with a PC, though, isn't it?
It is accessible to the PC, but the one-to-one is not accessible to the PC. We still have an access issue with PCs. Anything that we find a solution for, it will solve some things that'll create other problems, like Mrs. Weber said, what else are they going to be used for? It's like, it's like anything else that we give to students, they'll find another use for, and we'll find, as teachers, as professionals, we'll find a way to appropriately use it in the classroom. Many of these students already have this technology sitting in their pocket every day in school, in their phone, in their smartphone. It's just, it's trying to, if, if you walk into a classroom and hand a kid a sheet of paper, hand a kid a pencil, hand them an iPad, the excitement for learning is exponential. They want to get on there. If you have ever tried to make a 13-year-old boy read a book compared to having them read something on their iPad, I mean, just the access to it. I, I will admittedly tell you that I don't read much beyond quick articles and math things and things that I can find that applicable to my classroom. I took a trip over to teachers convention out to California, I read two books, one on the way there, one on the way back. I don't think I've read a book since I graduated from college a long time ago, but it was there, it's easy, it's accessible. I mean, the things that you can do with it. We've got, the science teacher in my house wants to use it for, for force and motion unit, for Ruth Goldberg. There's a free, there's a free app called TinkerBox. Students can actually create things gravitational, move the things around with TinkerBox, things like that.
I agree with you. I know all the things you can do with it.
Right.
I know they're really nice devices, but I was more concerned with what particular planning had gone into next year, so it's okay.
I can give you a specific plan.
I have the idea.
The teachers involved in this will all be, if they're not already, and Mr. Price does utilize it quite heavily, but the ones that aren't are getting involved into our Blackboard virtual learning environment to a significantly greater degree, because a lot of these classes that will be receiving these devices, the AP classes, they're much higher pressure, there's a much more, much greater level of responsibility to be interactive with that. Subsequently, by involving Blackboard, by involving our virtual learning environment and utilizing these devices with the app that naturally interacts with our virtual learning environment, they're no longer bound to that 45-minute period. They can then participate, and they will be participating in their discussion boards, posting their assignments from wherever they are in the district. They're not sitting in the library waiting to get onto a computer to do it. And you know what, in order for those students in those high-pressure AP classes to be successful, I think we owe it to them to give them that capability.
How are they connecting to the Internet? Is it Wi-Fi?
We have Wi-Fi deployment through the district. We're not utilizing, are you getting at the 3G like Sprint or AT&amp;T contracts?
When you say throughout the district, you mean in a district building?
Yes.
So at home, they would have to have Wi-Fi for these to be functional in that regard?
If they wanted to use them at home, yes. And if we chose to unlock them for them to do that.
What concerned me mostly, I think, is development of the policies to go along with this. Like you say, accident protection, who's going to be responsible if it gets broken?
Right.
If they come home and they stepped on it, and now they don't have an iPad anymore, you know, we're going to buy another one for them. I'm saying, it bothers me that those types of policies have not been.
Those types, as I mentioned before, those policies, those plans, processes, procedures, guidelines, whatever you want to call them, have always been the intent. We're here today because we have an opportunity to take advantage of a situation that would grant us an additional 200 devices. Had this stuck to the original timeframe, and if we were returning in May and asking for a July purchase, as was originally intended, all of that stuff would have been developed. We have the committee together, we're working on those things. We're here as a special circumstance because the iPad 2 was released three days ago, and we've got a very limited window to take advantage of a, of a price discount that Apple is offering us, that normally they do, they do not give. Have you ever seen an Apple device on special at Best Buy? Never. It just doesn't happen. They don't discount their, their equipment.
I'll just point out there is an alternative view, that you could purchase 800 of them and save. I'll just point out there is an alternative view that you could purchase eight hundred of them and save the money too.
No, if you buy the eight hundred, it, the, the cost is X for eight hundred, or the cost is X for a thousand. Because if you wait to purchase them, they're not going to be available. So you're going to be able to buy eight hundred for the same money in your pocket that you're going to be able to buy a thousand for, for the money in your pocket now. Because that's, they're not making any more of the iPad ones. That stock's going down. So if you're, if you, it's almost like if you're going to buy them, buy them now because you get two hundred of them for the same price you get at eight hundred of them.
That's, yeah, I have a number of concerns. That also concerns me, that we're buying a product that's going out of production.
It still has a full manufacturer's warranty.
I think anytime we buy any piece of technology, it's out of production six months later. I mean, whether it's a computer.
And it's obsolete when it hits the shelf, because there's somebody who's hit the shelf and they're already developing the software behind it. The nice thing about the Apple in general, and I'm a PC user, and an iPad, and an Android phone, and this and that. I mean, I'm so wired with technology, people are like, could you put that away for a minute, please? But the nice thing about Apple is that there are great things about it. It's pretty virus-proof, and they update software almost continually. So if you log on to your iTunes account and says, app, if you want, you need to download the new software, and their software, whether you have, if we, whether you have an iPod from eight years ago, or you have an iPod that you bought eight days ago, that software gets updated. So it, it's a continual process. Apple's always, they're the ultimate consumer company. They're always pulling you back in. They get you hooked on their product. Their software is updated. Their apps are unbelievable. I mean, we looked at, we looked at the, the Samsung tablet. We looked at the Kindle.
Yeah, we've looked at.
We looked at a lot of them, but they just don't have the applications that are there. They're just not developed. It's like buying, it's like buying a car from twenty years ago and expecting it to run like it's, everyone else is chasing that.
All we're looking at is, is, it's, it's a piece of hardware that has been superseded by another piece of hardware. And really, the only addition to the, to the other piece of hardware, the new piece, is the camera. Yes, there is a faster processor, but in our testing, there is, there is no issues with the processor that's in the first generation. It's fully backed by the manufacturer's warranty, original warranty. So comparing apples to apples, there's not a lot of difference between the iPad one and the iPad two.
I, I understand that. I mean, I, I'm finished with my questions. I understand that. I have some concerns about the planning, about using them educationally and the policies that go with them, but also the larger context of the economic situation we find ourselves in is something I have to think about as well. So, thank you.
Mrs. Randall?
And could I just have one comment on to that? That's, as far as like thinking about an uncertain future and some of those kind of things, this is not the kind of statement that not everybody is going to be happy to hear. But technology provides flexibility, and as we look at a future that might impact class sizes and some other ways in which we can deliver, can we deliver the same variety of curriculum to students that we've been able to do in the past? Technology allows us some flexibility to be able to do some of those things. And we also know that we have students that are really looking for alternative ways to learn. When we, when we did two different surveys for our summer school to look at what students were interested in doing, overwhelmingly, students wanted opportunities to do online learning or hybrid-type learning, where part of their learning is online and part of it is in the classroom. And so I think we have to recognize too that we have a diverse set of learners in today's society that are looking for and wanting some different ways to access material. And as we look at large class sizes, looking at some different ways to deliver, certainly when you do online hybrid kind of opportunities, you know, you can accommodate a higher class, class size. You can do some things that you otherwise aren't able to do with one teacher and a, you know, thirty-student ratio. So while on one hand, I know it looks like technology costs money, on the other hand, it does build some infrastructure for alternative delivery systems that can actually turn out to help us service students in some different ways.
Randall?
My comments are going to go a little bit more to the planning. Excuse me, as far as the discussion that you were, you're having with your committee regarding if a kid loses one or breaks or whatever, I'm going to assume that there's other models out there for that, other school districts, other companies or whatever.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That you're not going to be sitting there for two weeks trying to figure out what you're going to do if a kid, you know, loses an idea.
We'll be approaching other districts and, and looking at their models.
Right.
Not just for that, but also for management of devices, deployment, inventory and so on.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to take a couple of minutes to just talk about planning because when, when I got the agenda and I saw the item on it, I recalled, and you reminded us that you had given a presentation early in January. Now, not everybody in the community either was there or saw it on TV. So, and, and you appear periodically before the board, talking about the larger picture and where we are. So I want to go over a couple of points that were presented to everybody on the board and at the meeting on January eleventh that pertain to what we're talking about tonight, except for the fact that we're requesting that it be moved up a little bit. But some of the points that were given on that night, two months ago, were things that would happen would be no, no PC purchases this year, redistribute current units for optimal use, and I know you've been doing that for a couple of years, not no purchases, but fewer and fewer.
Yes.
Redirect funds to acquisition of mobile devices, move majority of services to cloud, deploy limited amount of mobile devices and assess for future years, continue with the mixed PC mobile device deployment strategy with a view to maximizing mobile device deployment over a number of years. As old low-use PCs fail, replace as mobile device or virtualization, whichever is appropriate. And as the tech burden reduces, focus efforts on teacher development, support and integration, and if possible, extend wireless access for mobile devices beyond the boundaries of the district buildings. So everything that you're talking about tonight, everything that came in the email that you sent us when we started asking about this presentation tonight, I was reminded, I think I've heard this somewhere before. So again, for the benefit of people who haven't been in on the long-range discussion of a couple of years, this isn't a surprise. It's not, oh, something's on sale, let's go buy it. We knew that we were going to purchase these. We didn't know we were going to have the opportunity to get the additional two hundred. So I, you know, I just want to be clear that this will be an informed decision.
Mark?
Question for Dr. Erdl. Along the theme of these are tough budgetary times, we need to spend less. I'm not a believer when, if the board were to decide to spend less, that we necessarily mean, don't buy the next thing, don't buy the next thing that comes to us for consideration. We, I'm a believer that we should look at all of the things that we spend and not just ask the first one that comes, because the first one, the, the next one that comes at us might actually be the one that we really should buy, and something else maybe is what we shouldn't buy. I cite, for example, January tenth, the board approved four hundred thousand dollars for rebuilding the tennis court at West High School. I suggest that if the governor can stop a train, this board could stop a tennis court. The idea that we can have a deployment to hundreds of children to have this technology in their hands as a vehicle for learning compared to redoing a tennis court, I think I'd give up the tennis court. Now, I'm not suggesting we do that tonight, but I'm just laying that out as an example, as context for the question. Dr. Erdl, if the board told you, cut four hundred thousand dollars from somewhere, is this your first choice? Or would you have other things that you'd bring back to the board and say, well, I really need these iPads for my educational program? There are other things that you would rather do without?
Well, I think if we're looking to, to make budget reductions, and I know we're going to talk about that later, but the context of structural reductions that are ongoing are the way we need to look. There's not, as we make reductions, we need to look at things that will be sustained over time. So if we cut four hundred thousand dollars from our technology budget, that means that's permanent reduction for the future, unless we cut something else, four hundred thousand dollars, and then it becomes a nickel-and-dime situation. When we look at budget reductions, we need to look at things that will be ongoing and sustainable. And there's not, I, I don't envision, I don't see any picture of more new money rolling into the district in the next several years, if, for a very long time. So we need to prepare ourselves as we go down, down the path of making sure we're set up from year to year to year. And I, there's many decisions that have been brought up where we say, we want to add this, but this is how we're offsetting it, so we're not adding cost. This is a situation where I would not be bringing a recommendation to reduce our technology budget to the board. There's a lot of other areas, and I think those will be some, those will, or some areas we'll have to address. But whether it's technology or capital, our capital money of one point five million dollars, we can say, let's not spend a million dollars this year on, on capital, and let's not fix our roofs. Well, what do we do next year? How do we get that back? Each year, it gets more and more difficult. So to make a long story short, if I'm bringing recommendations to the board, it's going to be, it's going to be permanent cuts that we could sustain year to year, and this would not be one of them.
Yeah, thank you.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes, I would just like to present perhaps a challenge to you, because you've given us a great deal of information. Would you come back if this passes? Would you come back next year sometime, possibly towards the end of the school year, and be able to tell us what impact these new pieces of equipment have given to our young people in?
Absolutely. Actually, part of the initiative will be the, Apple has a deployment team that you can engage for these rollouts. And they have one aspect in their, in their deployment and professional development that actually comes in and baselines the classes that you're deploying these to, and then records over the year the, the progress made, so that at the end of the year, you've got a, basically a, a benefit analysis that, that can be presented to whoever you like. So yeah, we can bring that, definitely bring that to the board.
That to me is the most exciting, particularly when the young people speak to what this is doing for them. Not only for today, but as they go on in life, because I think they will be able to tell us that.
Absolutely.
Mr. Connor?
For me, operating on the board, it would be helpful to have more consistency when we make these financial decisions. When we discussed adding the foreign language program, administration was praised for coming up with the cuts that was necessary to fund that program. And I think the statement was made that we had instructed Dr. Erdl that when he made major proposals, that he also proposed how we're going to save the money or how we're going to pay for it. So we have another very large purchase here, but I don't see, you know, the alternative of where we're going to save or, or cut back to make this purchase.
This, this funding is all within the technology budget. The presentation I made in January stated that we're not going to make PC purchases. We're foregoing the new PC purchases in order to purchase mobile devices. So I did come with a, with an offset solution.
And my other point is, it's frustrating for me to make these decisions in isolation where Dr. Erdl might know what he might compare this to as far as cuts are being made, but I can't make that comparison right now. Mr. Meyer compared this to a tennis court. Dr. Erdl talked about making permanent structural changes to the budget. Well, permanent structural changes to the budget are things like programs as well, so music programs, arts programs. So if we're going to throw out a lot of things, we can throw out all kinds of ideas of where the cuts are going to come from. But I, I think for me, it's helpful when we're making big decisions like this, especially in times of where we know we're going to have financial difficulty, that we have at least options on the table that we're looking at at the same time.
Meyer?
I wish to be clear that I am in no way criticizing, you know, this board's action on the tennis court, nor am I criticizing the governor's budget. My meaning is to say that, for example, even within the governor's budget, there are items that have increased funding, that there are strategic decisions in that budget as we have strategic decisions in, in our budget. So it is appropriate sometimes to keep spending money on some line, line items. The point is that, you know, and I agree, that we need to look at everything across the board and make those decisions. I wouldn't want to cut or turn down any particular item just because it's the next thing that came to us. That we do have the power to revisit some decisions as, as a governing body. And if, if we value this choice tonight and want to vote yes, we do indeed have the ability to revisit some other decisions and remove funding from other areas. Not everything, but some things. That's all I mean to say with those comments.
Thank you for declaring that, Mr. Meyer. I didn't mean to override that part of your comment.
I was fine with what we're all saying, you know.
After this extensive discussion, is there a motion with regards to the second bullet item under Business Services on the consent agenda? Any board member move to approve? For the record, I believe the entire language should be read. If you could read the second bullet point as if it were an actual item.
It is recommended that the school board approve the purchase of one thousand first-generation iPads at a discounted cost of three hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars in ISO move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Randall, is there any further board discussion? Is there any community comment on this portion of the consent agenda? If there's anyone who'd like to make a comment, please approach the microphone and state your name and address prior to making your comment.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ralph Salantani. I live at ninety-four oh seven Harding Boulevard. I've listened pretty attentively to the presentation tonight, and the one thing that I think has not been addressed is the time horizon for the hardware. I understand that the hardware is, I think, I believe that Mr. Price set a four-year warranty. But I think we also agree that the technology is outmoded rather quickly. Between it being outmoded quickly and between loss, damage, theft, I can easily see that somebody will be approaching the board next year to buy another X number of units of perhaps the same item, perhaps the new generation item. So when we look beyond the current time horizon and look out five or ten years, I can easily see this becoming a recurring purchase that, you know, although it's three hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars now, next year it might be half a million, and so on down the line. You know, with that in mind, and given that in order for these mobile units to be useful at home, the student will require Wi-Fi capability in his or her home. If they already have such capability, it seems to me they probably already have a PC or a laptop. So I'm really not sure that I understand just how needful the students are to have this technology. And again, the, the issue that I brought up first, that I can easily see this cost escalating as replacements come onboard. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Amy Guido. I live at two four six nine North Eighty-Sixth Street. And I just wanted to, you know, speak about the iPad. Actually, I hope that someone comes back every year and asks for us to purchase some more of these items, because eventually, I hope that all students in our school system will be able to use these. You know, we're a college-oriented district. The majority of us, you know, really hope that our children will go on to college, and we have to be realistic about technology and how important it is that our children understand how to use these items. My daughter is fourteen. My son has a social studies book about Wisconsin that he's using right now that's older than my daughter. If he had that book on an iPad, it would be up to date. By next year, it would be talking about, you know, what was happening in Madison right now. But because we use, you know, hard textbooks, they're outdated, and we have to wait sometimes when the budget is cut to be able to replace those textbooks. So I know, I understand that there's a lot of things that need to happen in this budget, but I think from my perspective as a parent, that this is one of the most important parts of the budget right now. And I think that I would really like you to consider supporting getting these iPads. Thank you.
Is there any further community comment? Prior to taking a vote, is there any further board comment? Mrs. Randall?
Actually, I was just going to say something quickly that, is it Guido? Mrs. Guido just said for me. And that is the fact that when we get proposals for new textbooks, when we. said for me. And that is the fact that when we get proposals for new textbooks, when we do our review of our curriculum areas, those costs keep going up. Textbooks do not get less expensive. Technology does. And the fact that, like you said, we have to wait so long to replace those. It's, it's not like you can do it electronically, but I'm always amazed at the, at the prices of the, of the text and paper support that we get. So, thanks for pointing that out.
Meyer?
A question from Mr. Price. I believe I know the answer, but I'm sure you do, and you can state it better. If a child goes home with an iPad and the child does not have internet capability at home, or does not have wireless internet capability, I'm assuming that if a textbook was downloaded in school, that that textbook is resident on that device, or if there's an app that's on that device, that that app can still, not all apps need real-time connectivity to function. Not all text materials will need real-time connectivity to the, to the internet or to our servers to function. Am, am I wrong?
That, that would be one of, one of the criteria that we would include when we looked for solutions. There's a mix out there. Some of them download them to the device, install them on the device. Others, you need internet connectivity. Now, with that being said, I think I may have mentioned in January about a current federal pilot program, the, one of the E-Rate programs that's looking to subsidize, if not cover, for the lower economic, lower economic households broadband internet to the homes and including wireless access for, for mobile devices. So, right now, is there a mix out there of, of students that have such access at home? Absolutely. But the federal government has realized that such a thing is, is a key part to a child's education and has a program in place, or at least is piloting a $10 million pilot this year of a program to, to expand that, to ensure that every, every child does have that. But as far as the textbooks go, if we're at a point where we, if we, if, if it came to the point where we needed to buy textbooks and we did not have a situation where every child had internet access at home, then one of the criteria would be that it needs to be locally stored.
Okay, thank you.
Any further board comment? Yes, Mr. Cronin?
How are you going to monitor student use of these? Are they going to be allowed to download any apps they want?
No, there's, there's management software. It's called MDM, Mobile Device Management Software. There are probably half a dozen decent products out there that we're currently evaluating, and basically, you manage them on mass. And as soon as they connect to the internet, they talk back to the central management server. We can turn features on and off. For example, downloading of apps, we can just turn that off. And we will. I mean, students will not be able to download any app that they want. They'll have to bring it back to probably the, the Library Media Center, the central location to update. So, there, there will definitely be positive controls. With that being said, they will have internet access and, and other types of access to information sources outside of the district. They'll have email. We're, we're introducing student email very, very shortly. So, they'll have email access, or there's a proposal to introduce student email. They'll have email access. They'll have blackboard ads, access, et cetera. So, they're not going to be locked down 100%, but for the things that matter, they will be. The things that could be a potential risk to arsen the students, there will be controls in place.
If there is no further board comment, Mrs. Glonte, would you call the rule? Mr. Cronin?
No.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee? Yes. The motion passes five to one. That brings us to recognitions. Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Wauwatosa West High School senior Herschel Kissinger has been named a 2011 Herb Cole Educational Foundation Excellence Scholarship recipient. Excellence scholarships in the amount of $1,000 are awarded each year to 100 graduating high school students. Scholarship recipients are chosen for their demonstrated academic potential, outstanding leadership, citizenship, community service, integrity, and other special talents. The Cole Foundation Scholarship and Fellowship Program was established by U.S. Senator Herb Cole in 1990. Each year, the Cole Foundation awards, Fellowship awards to teachers and excellence and initiative scholarships to students. To date, the foundation has awarded 7.4 million to Wisconsin educators, students, and schools. Senator Cole will attend regional recognition lunches honoring the recipients and present the awards.
On March 21, 11 staff members will be recognized as employees with 25 years of service to the district. This year's honorees are Michael Adamczyk, Building Supervisor at Whitman; Ronald Bard, Head Custodian at Roosevelt; Beth Bliss, Speech Pathologist in Student Services; Joan Vois, Reading Specialist at Whitman; Janine Brennan, Library Media Specialist at West; Pamela Urquhart, Social Studies at Longfellow; Michael Janizak, Fied in the District; Bruce Johnson, Manager of Buildings and Grounds; Nancy Lovless, Special Education at Underwood; Krista Murphy, Grade III at Jefferson; and Susan Nordstrom, Grade II at Underwood.
Eight students from the Wauwatosa School District have qualified to take part in the 30th Annual Wisconsin Future Problem Solving State Bowl in April. Over 300 4th through 12th graders from around the state will participate in the Global Issues Problem Solving Competition at the State Bowl. Wauwatosa students taking part in the event are Ian Schmidt Ernst, Matt Dobirstein, Jamie Squire, Brody Spohler, and Jacob Sinkata from Lincoln Elementary, and Janet Fee, Dane Sell, Abby Gifford from Longfellow Middle School. Their coach is Dr. Renee McCudden, 5th grade teacher at Lincoln Elementary. Working in teams of four or as individuals, students will analyze the challenges and develop solution ideas for a situation set in a fictional future and related to the global topic of water quality. At the State Bowl, Global Issues Problem Solvers will brainstorm 16 challenges, an underlying problem, and 16 solutions for a future situation on water quality. The Future Problem Solving Program International is global in scope, involving over 200,000 students. In Wisconsin, more than 150 teams from 25 school districts participated in this challenging program during the school year.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes. Thank you. The members of the Wauwatosa Music Department staff presented a recital yesterday at Longfellow Middle School. It was truly very enjoyable. And this is on their own time. This is something they plan. And I asked one of them, because they've had it in the past, and they used to be at Wisconsin Lutheran College, and they thought maybe there wouldn't be a big audience, because they hadn't done it for a couple of years. And the auditorium really had a very nice attendance. It, it's a gift to this community for something they truly value and enjoy. And I just want to recognize our music department, and especially those that participated yesterday. Mr. Will Ulrich, who is the World Music Teacher, it's the first time I've had an opportunity to hear and see some of the instruments that he has created. It was so delightful. And it was good to see young people in the audience also. So, again, thank you to our music department staff.
Thank you, Mrs. Weber, for bringing that to our attention. That brings us to our action items this evening. We'll begin with Student Services. Mrs. Randall?
It is, it is recommended that the school board approve revisions to Policy 5113, Public School Open Enrollment with regard to habitually truant students in the district under the open enrollment program, and students applying for open enrollment who are currently attending Wauwatosa schools via tuition waiver, as was presented, discussed, and revised at the February 28 board meeting. The recommended revision will allow the board to prohibit a habitually truant student from attending the district under the open enrollment law. An ISO move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cronin? Is there any board discussion? Mr. Ray, I'll give you a moment to get settled. Do you have any questions or comments on the Student Services action item?
I do not.
Thank you. Is there any community comment on this item? Mrs. Glonte, would you call the rule? Mr. Cronin?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
The motion passes. We're going to move forward. Our next item is the Superintendent's Action Item. Mr. Meyer?
It is recommended that the school board approve the five-year extension of the contract for the Wauwatosa STEM Charter School, formerly named TOSA School of Health Science and Technology, as was presented and discussed at the February 14 meeting and further reviewed by legal counsel. An ISO move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weber. Before we begin board discussion, Dr. Erdl, at the last meeting, the board discussed that this should be reviewed by counsel for the district. Could you just advise us as to whether that has occurred in any other incidents that have occurred since the last meeting?
That has occurred. I'm going to ask Mr. Chaney, because he has done the consulting with our legal counsel on the contract, and he can share the results of that.
We did, we spoke with Mike Ostermeyer, who I believe wrote the original contract. There were, this volume seems to be awful. There's two redline versions before you. The first redline version was the result, and I should sit down, the earlier one. You obviously don't know which is which. There's one redline version, which demonstrates the changes that were recommended by Attorney Ostermeyer. They were really along the lines of the information that the board discussed last time, making sure, for example, that there's a mutual authority to end the charter if enrollment drops. He advised some language cleanup in terms of just reciting the history of the charter school a little bit more clearly, but, but no major revisions. There's a second redline version, which we then reviewed with the charter school, and just to clean up some, I guess what I'd call educational and non-legal things, like the names of the officers of the charter school, the fact that we'd no longer use, that we now use Power School versus the old student system that was still referenced in there. And so, you find that second redline version that illustrates those changes. But other than that, the changes were rather minor.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments? Mr. Cronin?
I have a question about the effective date of the contract.
Yes.
It says that it starts in 2012. Effective date.
I believe our current contract with, with the five-year goes through 2012. You are approving a five-year extension early.
The reason I'm confused is that on page, well, first, that's confusing to me, because it started, we're having two. That means this contract, we're approving it tonight, but it won't be enforced until a year, over a year from now.
That is correct.
But on Section 6.7, on page 11, it states that all prior application materials, agreements or contracts, representations, statements, negotiations, understandings, and undertakings are superseded by this contract. So, that seems conflicting to me.
At its effective date. Correct. It, it still has an effective date when the contract becomes effective.
Why would we not just make this contract effective now through the end of this contract period? It seems, I mean, because we're changing the name of the school, does that mean they're operating under the current name until a year from now?
I think they, they will effectively change their name at the beginning of the school year, but they are writing out their old contract. We could change the dates. We could supersede the old contract and change the dates. This wasn't an item of discussion to me.
I was asking if there was a legal reason why it wasn't done that.
No, there was not. There was not a legal reason we could do that. There's probably a limit on the length and term of a charter school contract, but off the top of my head, I don't recall if that's true. And if there were a limit, that would mean that we would basically be superseding one contract and giving it a shorter term. This provides, by rolling the men to end for five years apiece, it gives a longer total life to the school. Does that make sense?
It does. Thank you. My other question was on page 10. I think it's in Section 6.1. Talks about a three-year review. And if, if, my question was, is the school going to have a three-year review every three years? Or if it's three years from the date this contract takes place, that will be four years from now. What, what's the intention?
It was, it was three years into the contract. I believe that our current contract, there were calls for a review at the end of the contract as well. So, you would get a, a report from the charter school at the end of next contract, and then this would guarantee a three-year review for planning for the extension of that contract. So, the three-year review is a contractual provision regarding the board's planning for whether or not to renew the contract. So, yes, the three-year reviews would be the third year of this contract, which would be four years from now. But that doesn't prevent annual reports, which we do also get.
Okay. Just seems like it was made a little more complicated than it needed to be as far as that.
Right. The purpose of the three-year review is that's the timeline for reviewing that data to make a decision regarding the role over the contract. Part of the reason why we are approving the contract early is so that people making enrollment decisions in the school, both current attending and future attending, have a, a horizon regarding how long the school is going to be in existence and, and whether to make decisions to send their students there. So, if we wait till the last year of the contract, it creates an unnecessary uncertainty about the future of those students, because we do take them in at first grade, and we want to be giving them assurances to the long-term future of that school. So, I mean, there is a reason why we don't wait till the last year of the contract.
I understand that. It seems to me a more, an easier way to do this would just be have a rolling five-year contract, if we're going to do that. Because it says in here, after the three-year review, that this district would normally make a decision if they were going to renew for an additional two years. So, after every three-year review, if you just made it another rolling five-year contract, you wouldn't have to have all these strange dates and things. But I, I know this accomplishes the same thing.
We could, I think, rolling contracts from other contracts that we have that are rolling are something where we want to give pause and let the board make decisions by letting, rather than letting them roll. But that's a, a policy decision. The board could change that.
Thank you. I just had one more question. At the last meeting, we asked questions, or I asked a question about if you had a long-range plan, three-to-five-year plan for your funding, what you would need to supply the school with special equipment for the STEM program. Did you have a chance to put anything together along those lines?
At this time, we have not developed a three-to-five-year plan that has been pushed forward to our governance council. However, we have had discussions. Right now, we operate on an annual budget. Our annual budget is approximately $30,000. We figure that number to be the cost of changing, updating curriculum, purchasing some technology based off of about a $10,000 cost right now. So, the bulk of that, lion's share of that $30,000, $10,000 of that would be just rolling technology upgrades. The school district does contribute a per pupil amount that actually would offset some of that $30,000 as well. Right now, for example, it's $12,500 based off of the per pupil expenditures that John Mack gave us to start the school year, about $192 per student. If that number stays, then obviously, we'll be close to $12,500 for next year, although I would anticipate that to fluctuate a little bit, given our current circumstances with student expenditures. But in the end, it basically brings it down to $17,500. So, if you take $30,000 less than $12,500, we need to come up with $17,000, $17,000 each year above and beyond through benevolence, partnerships, grant opportunities for us to push where we would like to push as a charter school. So, we foresee that as our, as our rolling future cost. I don't know if it's going to look a little different in a year or two. Obviously, as you heard tonight, the cost of technology, sometimes you can jump on it, sometimes you, you can't. But we have every reason to update in our, I, I have no problem at all publicly saying that we have no problem updating you annually on where we are with our expenditures. But right now, it is... But right now, it is in the books to be about a $30,000 annual budget.
And that includes all the equipment you envision you need to develop a full STEM program?
At this point, yes.
I mean, at this point?
At this point, as of today.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
No problem.
Board members, anything further?
I have a quick one.
Yes.
Not from Mr. Rich necessarily. Not, not from Mr. Rich. I just want to make clear that, or make it sure that I understand. This may be very obvious, but I want to make sure I'm not doing something incorrect. We received three versions of the contract with our board packet, two of them redlined and one of them not. I anticipate what we're voting on is the final un-redlined version. Is that accurate?
That is, and that version reflects the changes of both redlines.
A compilation of all of the changes.
Correct. And I would make one note that is a kind of a Scrivener's error. In the first paragraph, it references February, and when the party signed it, that will be changed to March to be consistent with this board meeting.
Anything further, board members? Is there any community comment on this action item? Staying none. Mrs. Galante, would you call the roll? Mr. Crowner?
Abstain.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mrs. Speed?
Yes.
The motion passes. That brings us to reports to the board. We'll begin with student services, and Ms. Kwiatkowski will have a presentation with regards to open enrollment and inter-district transfers.
Tonight, I'm going to share with you information in regard to the recent open enrollment window that occurred on February 7th through February 25th, along with other, along with other programs, options to families in district, the chapter 220 and the inter-district transfer program. During the month of February, the state open enrollment application period was held from February 7th to February 25th, and we received a total of 1,578 applications for students in grades, early childhood, which is three years old, through 12th grade, to come and enroll and be a part of the Wauwatosa School District. This is a summary of the applications that were received from other school districts. It's a summary of where, which district, what is the resident district of the child or the family who's filled out an application for open enrollment. Obviously, Milwaukee's a high participant, but we also have districts as far away as Wanaquie and other districts around our surrounding communities. This is a grade level summary of the applications received. We had applications for early childhood, seven applications. JK and SK are always big grades, and then anytime you have a change in school. So typically, sixth grade's a big application number as well as ninth grade. So, yeah, in total, we have 792 applications for elementary students and then 786 applications for secondary students. Through the state statute and open enrollment and through our school board policy, we do offer sibling preference of current open enrollment students. So these are where there's siblings of current students who are attending the Wauwatosa School District. These are students that would be eligible for sibling preference if space is available in that grade level. Continuing preference are those students that are currently attending our district under a tuition waiver. So at one point, they were a resident of the district, and they've moved out of the school district. So they are applying for open enrollment with the hopes of continuing in our school district. We have a total of 27 at the elementary level and 42 at the secondary level. In addition, we had some applications for students to leave the Wauwatosa School District. This is a summary of those applicants. A total of 130 applications were received for students who live in Wauwatosa to attend school in another district. It was a total of 93 students that applied, so, because students are allowed to apply in three different school districts. And we had applications from, in all grades except early childhood, so JK through 12. This is a summary of the, the applications of students to attend other districts. This is the districts that they're applying to, districts as far away as Appleton. Obviously, those are districts that offer virtual school programs. I don't think anybody's going to commute from TOSA to Appleton. Well, I shouldn't say that, Mr. Price, but most people don't commute from that far a distance to attend school daily. So we have a total of 130 applicants, 93 students. Here's a little more information about those 93 students, describing who they are. Currently, none of them are attending a private school, parochial school, or a daycare. None of them are registered as attending a home-based education program. Six are currently attending school in the district that they requested to apply in, under a tuition waiver. So like, we have some students that are continuing students here. They're already in a district, and they're requesting to continue in that district under open enrollment. Forty-nine of the applications didn't have any information reported as to who they are or where they are. Thirty-eight of the students are currently attending a Wauwatosa public school, and at this point, none of those applicants are currently enrolled in a virtual school. Of 130 applications for students who applied to leave Wauwatosa, 46 of those students requested to attend a virtual school, 13 requested an MPS specialty school, six of them are requesting to continue in the school that they're already attending under a tuition waiver, and then 65 just requested another school district general program. We also, we don't have any new applications for chapter 220 students into our district because we don't have any seats available, but we do have some students in our district that have applied for, to be a part of the chapter 220 program out of the Wauwatosa School District. Nine students applied to attend the Milwaukee Public School District through the chapter 220 program. The breakdown for those students is six of them applying for the language immersion programs, one to the Milwaukee School of the Arts, one to the Montessori School. Of the nine, one is currently attending an MPS, an MPS program through, or attending MPS through chapter 220, and would like to change schools. The other thing that we offer in our district is inter-district transfers, and here's where we're at with those requests. We have a total of 38 requests that have already been processed for next year. Thirty-two of those requests have been approved. Six have been denied because space is not available. And then we also have 25 elementary applications that are on hold for enrollment projections to be completed. The primary reason for students to transfer, the big one that we're processing right now, is that transfer from Longfellow to Whitman because the student will be attending West High School. Siblings that are attending a transfer school, sometimes transfers requests are for convenience purposes, sometimes it's due to where the home is geographically, and sometimes it's just a school preference. Inter-district transfers, the ones that we currently have on hold, will be processed during the first two weeks of April. Inter-district transfer requests are given priority over new open enrollment seats. So we make sure that families that are requesting to go into a building, that if there's space available there, that we're giving it to the current students enrolled in our district. And then we send letters of approval and denial in April, and then we also continue to monitor that as we move through the open enrollment process. For our open enrollment lottery, we're holding a lottery on March 25th. We need to notify applicants of the, that who have applied for open enrollment, whether or not their application has been approved, or whether on waiting list by April 8th. And then by May 13th, we need to notify them of their school assignment.
Board members, any questions or comments? Mrs. Randall?
Teresa, can we look at number 10 again, please? The summary of requests of inter-district transfers? No. Second last slide. Yeah, that one. Thirty-eight requests have been processed for the next school year. Does that mean, that's, okay, that's the next two items. Thirty-two were approved and six have been denied because of no space availability?
Correct.
The, the ones that are on hold, why aren't the, why aren't the 32 on hold as well? That's the only way I can ask.
Sure. The 32 that have been approved are primarily families that have requested that transfer to Whitman because West is, and, and that's board policy that they can make that choice.
Okay. So that, there's no concern there about room, but with the 25 elementary, we're concerned about whether or not there's going to be space?
Correct.
Okay.
We just monitor that.
Thank you.
Other board member questions or comments? Is there any community comment on this item? Thank you very much. I assume you'll keep us updated. I know this is a fluid situation, and we look forward to hearing about it throughout the summer. That brings us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Erdl will begin with the budget update.
Thank you. When you say fluid, I think that's kind of the situation we're dealing with, with the budget as well. We keep getting more and more information each and every day about the budget and what our position looks like. I think certainly it's a daily discussion, and we're talking about the budget from the administrative perspective and looking at where we're going to be for next year. And I think most of the questions I get are pretty simple. It's, what does this mean for our school district? What does this mean for my child? What does this mean for our school? And, and I think there's a lot, there's a lot of different pieces that play into the, to the budget. And I'm going to try to walk through the information that we know to this point and where we're at in our process as well. Currently, I think most everybody knows that the budget bill has been signed into law and is expected to be published, I believe, in 10 days. So that, that bill will be taking, will be in force on the budget, the budget repair bill. Sorry. The budget has been put out, the proposed budget for 11/13, and we actually had a meeting with one of our legislators this morning discussing that aspect. And I think we know in the budget process, anytime, every two years when the budget comes out, there's a lot of, there's a long process between now and when the budget gets signed. And hopefully, this year, it does get signed by July 1, and it's in place by July 1. Oftentimes, in the past, it seems to drag out into September, October, so we're left making a lot of guesses on what it's going to end up being. But some belief there's going to be a lot of amendments proposed, and hopefully, some that will, will benefit us. Hopefully, there's, one of the, one of the amendments we're going to be pushing and asking for administratively is to look at open enrollment revenue and increasing the amount of open enrollment revenue that goes with, with each student. I think that would have a real positive impact on our school district. And I think also, looking at more flexibility, the budget repair bill gave a lot of tools. Administratively, I think we'd look at it and say, we would like even more flexibility within that budget repair bill so we can operate more from the local level. So we've asked for some additional flexibility, like whether it comes to the WRS or the health insurance pieces, being self-insured on the healthcare plan, we're able to make modifications that we can save greater amounts of money with less, less impact. So a lot of those discussions are yet to come. The proposed budget has a reduction of 5.5% in revenue cap authority, and for our district, that comes to 500, roughly $585 per member. And when you're talking member, member is not total students. Member is based on membership, which is resident students, and in addition, you count junior kindergarten students as a point six. So our membership is roughly 6,000 students. Under state, current state law, the revenue limits are to go up $275 per year. We're looking at a minus 585. So from what we were looking at by state law, it's actually a reduction of $860 per member. That comes to a, to about $5.2 million. The, when we look at the WRS and the 5.8% impact of the WRS back from all employees, that's roughly $2.5 million that is savings to offset that reduction. When you look at the equivalent of 12.5% for health insurance premiums, that's roughly $1.3 million. So the total we're able to get back is $3.8 million. Going into, going into this year, looking at previous year where we went up $200 per student, and looking at a $200 per student or per member increase, we're still left with a $1.5 million deficit for the upcoming year. And I think there's been a lot of discussions of how we're going to try to make that up. We've had discussions with, trying to look at pay freezes. If we can accomplish pay freezes across the district, we'll have a significant impact on that $1.5 million. So we'll, we'll continue to have those discussions. I think the intent is anytime, as I mentioned earlier, when you're looking at budget reductions, we need to prepare not for just this year, but the second year is also a revenue cap freeze. And costs go up. We know gas is going up. We know a lot of costs rise every single year. And even if we have a, looked at a pay freeze two years in a row, it's still not a pay freeze, it's a pay reduction. But even if we looked at a pay freeze two years in a row, it still doesn't accomplish the negative impact in the second year. So as we look at budget reductions, when I talk structural and saying, we need to make sure we're setting it up for future years as well. We can't make cuts that next year, or two years, or three years, we're going to need to add back to the budget for basic operations. And I think that's, that's a big part of the concern. Also, in the reductions in the second year, if revenue cap and total statewide spending goes down by 5.5%, the open enrollment revenue is based upon previous year's spending in the entire state. So we have to project that as a loss of 5.5% unless we can get legislation or amendments put in that would, at a minimum, freeze the level that we're at now and not reduce. So that's roughly a $500,000 reduction for year two that we'll have to face in the second year of the budget. Even if, without a pay freeze, if you look at the current CPI, which is in the language for increases for, for teachers alone, of 1.5 or 1.6% increase on a 30-some-million-dollar salary benefit, that's an increase above and beyond of, without a pay freeze, above and beyond of $450,000 to $500,000 as well. So as I throw out all these different numbers, and I think that's kind of the stage we're in with trying to determine where we go, where do we go from here, and how do we accomplish what we need to accomplish for the start of next year? And I, my goal is that, looking at this as an opportunity as a district to really look at what's most important. I think it's also an opportunity to look at how we pay our employees as we move further down the road, and how we structure that. We've, we have a system right now that is not going to be sustainable year one, year two, with the salary schedule set up the way it is. It's, it's just not. And I think when we look at opportunities, I think over the next several months, next year, to come to conclusions on how we can creatively do that and recognize our best people. Because ultimately, as a school district, it does come down to the kids. And unfortunately, when you sit and talk budget and cutting programs and cutting staff and, and all those other pieces, you, you do have to look at what's the impact on kids. And the best impact we can have, whether it's class sizes, and you look, a lot of the, a lot of the latest research about class size, to some degree, it, it clearly does not have an impact as much as it does having a great teacher in front of students. And what's critical is we hire the best, we retain the best, we develop the best, and we make sure they stay in front of our kids, working with our, our students. And to do that, even with a changing environment, and I think that's the focus we, we have to have, is we continue and find creative ways to do that, to make sure we're keeping the best in our district. Because it is a competitive market. And every school district in the state of Wisconsin is facing these same challenges as we move forward. And I, again, I look at it, it's going to be an opportunity for us to put Wauwatosa out in front, and it's not competitive to push anybody else down. But I think we can look at saying, we're going to find a way to attract the best, have the best working environment for our employees. We have 1,000 employees, and we have to look at, at all of those pieces, whether it's teachers, administrators, support staff. So I think those are parts that are going to drive where we go with the budget. As we move closer, what I, what I intend to do is, I'm going to actually start putting information on the website, on, on a blog, and trying to update whoever wants to look at it and get more information on an ongoing basis, because things do change, like I said, from day to day. We just received an email from the DPI today, giving us more clearer estimates on revenue cap authority in the next two years. Legislative Fiscal Bureau has about, I believe, they have three weeks from the publishing of the budget to come out with their analysis. And that's really where, they'll take the 1,400 pages, break it down to four or 500 pages, and then we've got to do our analysis based on, on that. I think we have a couple of good people that can, certainly Dan can read through legalese pretty well. pretty well. And John has a pretty good understanding of the state funding mechanism and how it's going to operate. But I think we have to look at worst-case scenario and prepare for that at this point in time until things become clear. If they become clear, I think we can look at better situations. So that's the approach that we're going to take, and we're going to look at the upper end and try to put ourselves in position. So we're set up for the next two years and not going through this again the second year. And at that, I'll leave it open to questions from the board, if there is any.
Board members? Meyer, Mr. Ray?
Who did you meet with today?
Representative Koyenga.
Okay. Thank you.
Ray?
I just want to sort of clarify where we're at and what's been passed and what hasn't over in Madison, just so we're all real clear, because it's gone through some machinations in the last week. But help, help me out. Last Wednesday, the legislate, legislature took some action, and in essence, as I understood, it took the budget repair bill and divided it into two separate sections, a non-fiscal section and a fiscal section. And then relatively quickly, they took action on the non-fiscal section of the budget repair bill. Is that the extent to which the budget repair bill has been passed as it stands at this moment?
Yes.
And then I think the discussion has been that it sounds like 14 Democratic senators have indicated that they're coming back into town, so that a vote on the remainder of the budget repair bill is likely to happen in the relative near future. But there still is that fiscal component that needs to actual, actually be presented to the Senate and passed before the complete budget repair bill is, has been passed. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other?
Up for me.
Other board members? Mrs. Randall?
Either Mr. Mack or Dr. Erdl. I'd like to hear a little bit about the health insurance part, because I know we're hearing as board members that, that that's one of our big tools to work with these reductions. But I also think that that's being said under the assumption that we are insured through the, through the WIEC insurance plan. I think, and we're not, so.
I think the legislation was regarding, there's actually only one school district that's in the state plan, as far as I know, and that's Monona Grove. While people would say we should be moving into the state plan, when I mentioned the managing of, of our health insurance, our health insurance plan is much less costly than the state plan. And the, the language says that the employer cannot pay more than 88% of the health, of the premiums of the health insurance plan, and that's for the state fund and for people that are in that state plan. So we're still a little bit unsure of what the language, how it means for us. But when we look at savings of 12.5%, we've known for a long time that premium co-pays is not where you get the biggest savings. While it may look like, you know, the employees are paying more, but when we manage our own health plan, the, the goal of that health plan is to keep costs down on a year-to-year basis, so our increases are not going up. We know that if we go to a much higher deductible plan and reduce costs through, through that mechanism and through plan design changes, it's, it's much less costly all around, and we get greater savings. And then from a year-to-year basis, the projections are that it will stay, the increases will not go up as high. Part of the thinking is, when people say, I've got to pay 20% of my premium, or I've got to pay 10% when they haven't been paying 10%, is, well, if I'm paying for it, I'm going to use it. Versus having a high deductible plan, it's called consumerism, and I mean, I think everybody knows that consumerism in the health insurance industry where you want people to make good consumer decisions. You don't want to go so far that they make poor decisions and don't go in when they do need it, and then it becomes a greater cost on the other end of it. But you want people to make good decisions. And by going to, changing the plan to design forces people to make better decisions and reduce costs.
Okay. And so that budget repair portion of the bill that's been passed, that doesn't dictate anything other than the percentage that we can pay, correct?
I, I don't think it even dictates that. That doesn't, that, that part doesn't pertain to us.
Well, because I keep hearing that we're going to get a lot of money from that, so that we'll be able to manage all of these reductions.
Actually, for us, it doesn't dictate anything. Only for districts that have, you know, that plan and that budget. For us, it doesn't apply at all.
Right.
But I think what the intent was, was to show other people that savings could be had in health insurance by making either plan design changes or premium contributions. You know, one thing I thought while this, I know Dr. Erdl went through the total, the total budget scenario earlier, and I think one people, what, what people really, really need to realize about this is even though the statutes say it's a 5.5 reduction, it really isn't. It's really seven and a half or eight percent. And that's what really kind of threw everything off with, with this, because when they wrote the legislation, they did it, the 5.5 is based on the 2010-11 revenue limit. It wasn't based on existing law, which would have raised the revenue limit about $275. So it's really 585 plus 275 if we were, had it come down. And I think that, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, left or right, but I think people need to understand that because it is very critical. And we were planning a budget based on $200 increase per pupil. So 200, and now it's minus 585. So it's really minus 785 from where we had been planning, which is a lot. It's massive, the way I look at it. And the tools that they gave us, while they are very helpful, they still left a huge gap, not for us, but there's a major gap for other districts. And there's some poorer districts that, in my opinion, they, they won't even pass to make it up in the levy. Doesn't much aid their growths. So there's some serious consequences that the details haven't come out yet for other, for other districts and ourselves, as we look at this closer. It's, it's more serious than I thought it would be. I thought it would be easier to balance this, but the fact that they went from a revenue limit of this year down five and a half versus what it was supposed to be going down 5.5, you know, it, that makes a huge difference when you talk about the base, just so you understand it. Because when we add the numbers, then we're talking about going down over our revenue limit over $5 million in one year. That's, that's huge.
Thanks. And on the open enrollment piece, where you said you're hopeful that there'll be an increase per pupil, would that be our existing open enrollment population or?
Well, I think part of, with open enrollment, we get roughly $6,700 per student, and the sending district maintains the rest, so roughly $5,000. While we, the receiving district educates the child and provides all services, the home district maintains some of that money. And we've, and I know we've had discussions here, and part of, part of what I had shared a couple of months ago, that I had heard that was going to be included in the budget bill and increase, or included in the budget repair bill, or now that there would be amendments. So it's not really anything new necessarily that I've heard that that's going to go, but that would be on existing open enrollment students.
Okay. All right.
Any other board questions or comments? Is there any community comment on this portion of the superintendent's report?
Ryan Leibl, 2444 North 88th Street. More a couple of questions than, than comments. Do you pass an annual budget that starts July 1st? Is that correct? July 1st?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Where could we get a copy of the current year budget?
The district offices.
In the district, okay, just stopped by.
It's on the website.
It's on the website too? Great, thank you. I think it's a great idea for your blog to update the community. I think there's a lot of people out there who have questions, and not knowing leads to a little bit of apprehension. Could you talk a little bit about, after I sit down, the process that you'll use for developing the budget that will take effect July 1st, 2011? Just kind of how it's developed up, whether it's paid staff, and then it comes before this committee? Obviously, I'm a novice at this, but I'm interested in how you go about developing your budget and what sort of community input there is on that. And the last thing is, could you talk a little bit about whether you have, you have the ability to increase the property tax levy, given the changes that's in the budget repair bill? I've heard some of the things that, that have put some limits on school districts' ability to do that, but that may, but I may not be correct. But if you have any information on that, I'd appreciate it as well. Thank you.
I would say that I, Dr. Erdl would have the opportunity to respond if he would like it this time, but this is really an opportunity for public comment. And certainly, you would be free to make an appointment if your questions are not answered sufficiently tonight, so that you could discuss those in a private manner. But I don't know, Dr. Erdl, do you care to respond at this point?
Well, I can respond to the, but the levy, that's been frozen, so we can't, we cannot increase our levy. So the board has the authority to, well, I shouldn't say it's been frozen. We cannot increase our levy amount. But if we get additional resident students, that could go up, but not significantly. The budget process, I think, would be, I mean, I would have, I think Mr. Mack would be the person that would be happy to sit down with you, and it's an extensive process that he, it probably would be rather interesting to, to sit down with him and have that discussion. Well, then I think you would enjoy, no, but I think it's a pretty extensive process, and it leads up to a, an approval in July 1st, which, which is a conditional approval. And then in October is when the levy is actually set and the real approval. So we need approval in July to start spending for the fiscal year. That's, I mean, that's the minimalist kind of explanation for it, but I think Mr. Mack could. Oh, and yes, there is a public hearing in June as well for the, the budget as, as well.
I know that that's an overview, but I would invite you again to make an appointment with the administration if you'd like to get more into the details.
I appreciate that. Thanks.
Dr. Erdl, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just to, you know, I haven't read the whole bill yet. I have it downloaded, and maybe somebody here can comment on it. But just in the media, I've been seeing that there is some provision for referendum. I do not know what that is or what the details are. And, and so that would be quite a big decision to do that kind of thing. And there's been no discussion within the board on that line of thinking. So just to let you know, all the conversations there have been, there have been no conversations about a referendum.
Dr. Erdl, then I believe you have a second item. Oh, I'm sorry.
I would like to comment on what you said about public input. I think because this is such an extraordinary budget season for us, I think we need to give some thought into how the public can participate in the process in a different way than they have in the past. I know previously, we've had the budget presented in the budget hearing, and we voted on it two weeks later. But I think this particular time, we might have to make some decisions that depend on what the community values in their schools. And I, I would like the board to really think about administration, especially as to how we can involve the public that, in that process at an earlier stage than normal, so we can make the right decisions.
Dr. Erdl, the second item under superintendent's report?
The Wauwatoza, Wauw, Wauwatoza.
That's a good one.
Wauwatoza Youth Commission will hold its annual mock school board meeting on Wednesday, March 23rd at 7:00 PM here in the boardroom at the Fisher Administration Building. More than 20 high school juniors will play the roles of school board members and administrators. They will discuss the following issues: adopting a restorative justice program in the high schools, eliminating finals week at the high schools, the purchase, use, and policies of personal computing devices such as e-readers and tablet computers, iPads, and discontinuing athletics in order to meet budget shortfalls. And I would just say that for anybody that has any interest whatsoever to see our students perform, it's pretty amazing to see what these, these young men and women can do. And in a couple of weeks, the amount of research they do and the arguments that they make, one of them I actually put on there for my own purposes, so I can hear what, how they're going to debate it and give me some information. But actually, they, we had our initial meeting already, and it's, it really is awesome seeing these kids in action. And the Wauwatoza Youth Commission does a great job putting this together each year, and it's kind of a real-life experience, and they gather all the way around this table and they debate, and they actually vote on everything, and it's a pretty neat experience. So if you can come here for it and observe it, otherwise it will be televised as well.
And again, that's March 23rd at 7 o'clock, right here in this room. Is there any board discussion of that item?
Just want to make clear that these are not real agenda items. You know, before we start getting the emails that we're discontinuing athletics in order to meet budget shortfalls, these are topics that are interested in the students and that they use for their mock school board meeting.
Is there any community comment on that portion of the superintendent's report? All right. That brings us to one final opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items. Again, if anyone would like to make a comment on an item not on tonight's agenda, please approach the microphone and state your name and address.
My name is Kristy Casey. I live at 635 North 70th East Street. This is kind of non-agenda items, but kind of agenda items for the evening. I'd like to just take an opportunity to publicly thank our school board for serving our community. Thank Dr. Erdl and the administration for doing what you're doing. You guys have had to make some really horrific decisions, and I'm sure you'll have to make some more. And I often sit here thinking, oh, I'm so thankful that I don't have to be making that decision. And I recognize that they are tough decisions. I continue to be encouraged by what administration is bringing to the board and to parents and the community for our students. I am hopeful for our students, despite what's going on around us. And I am excited that you all remain focused on the children, because I think so often they get lost. But it's our job, your job, to bring them these opportunities and these experiences to make them better citizens of the world. So thank you very much.
If there is no further community comment on non-agenda items, the school board will now adjourn into executive session to discuss the status of negotiations with collective bargaining units pursuant to WISSTAT Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E and to review information regarding administrator contracts pursuant to WISSTAT Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub F. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene into executive session? Thank you, Mrs. Weber. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Mrs. Calante, would you call the role? Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfil?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
We stand adjourned. Let's take approximately a five to 10-minute break and reconvene between 8:55 and 9:00.